Have gone up and this is kind of along those same lines. We need to kind of adjust our rates if we're not operating in a deficit that we're operating at least, you know, in a neutral type position. And so that is what led to the, this discussion on garbage fees.
I see back in 22, we collected more than we butched it. Same thing 21 was close. No, it wasn't. It was down two. So I guess my point is if we raise the fees, do we have more non-payers?
Well, we've got approximately 60,000 customers here in the city. You know, that number fluctuates a little bit, sometimes higher, sometimes lower. But, but approximately 60,000 household residents, obviously they're currently paying $27 per, per household, per month. That equates for about every dollar in increased fees, about $720,000 in generated revenue. And that's assuming we collected all, everybody pays, all that kind of stuff. So what, what I proposed before you, and again, the charts you're seeing here are only operational costs. So this, this chart does not take into account, like for instance, we bought some, several new packer trucks recently over the past few years. It does not take into account those expenditures because they're not paid out of the general fund. We also have a landfill sale construction. That capital expenditure is not a general fund expenditure. So those are large expenditures that are not even, I guess contemplated in, in the, the operating budget versus the revenue that you're seeing on the chart here.
Patrick, Mr. President, I got a question.
Mr. Ball.
Mr. Dun, Mr. Dunson. Thank you, sir. So are we going to raise the dump fees on other items also?
That's part of the plan. Obviously, starting with the, the challenge with the dump fees, we will generate a little more revenue there. And honestly, it's, it's really minimal that what we would generate by raising the fees. The real money is in the, the collection fees. Just to give you, for instance, you know, what I had projected in the tipping fees, if we increase tipping fees, you'd only generate about 160,000 bucks.
Oh, wow.
So it's, while we are looking at raising those, it's not really a big revenue generator. And the reason for that is, you know, some of our, you know, largest customers, you know, whether it's repower bringing to us, whether it's our own city trunk, trucks dumping at the landfill. We don't pay ourselves to, to dump at our own landfill. So all that's assumed to kind of be covered in the cost of the collection.
Sounds good.
And, and also what you're looking at here is, it's combined, now used to the landfill budget was separate from the sanitation budget. But under the new organization, we have combined those. So it only makes sense to look at those budgets as a, as a cumulative collective budget. Because obviously if you're going to collect trash, you got to have somewhere taken disposal of. So they really go hand in hand together.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Dunson, when is the last time we had an increase? When was, when was $27 put into place?
Seven, seven, eight years.
It was when repower, at that time it was called IRE.
Yes, sir.
It's been a number of years ago. It was first put into place during that, when it first came online. And that's probably been.
Twenty sixteen, twenty fourteen.
Yeah.
No, twenty, okay, thank you.
So nine years?
Nine years.
Yeah.
We're looking at roughly nine years for the last increase. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Mitchell.
I, I have no issue with, with raising sanitation, but I do have an issue that I, I hope that we table it over, give me an opportunity to talk. I have three Zoom meetings in the next week that I get opportunity to at least tell my residents before we pass this, this, this increase, about this increase. I have no problem us raising it, but I do have a problem me not having time to tell them about the increase that we, we, we might partake in.
Okay. Anyone else?
Mr. Calhoun.
Mr. Pruitt.
Patrick, the, the concern I have, and again, the $5 is not the issue. For me, the issue is the service that we're doing. We're still having an issue with, with curbside. The, 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 the tra, I don't know what you, the trash, I guess.
Yeah, your household garbage.
Household, yeah, not the cans, but the other. We're having a difficult time keeping up with that. And the second thing is, this council has been told for the last year or so that we were going to see some sort of privatization plan of maybe privatizing the can and keeping the other or vice versa. And we've never seen a thing. That's, I, that's two concerns. And the big concern is, we raised it $5, but we're still calling you saying, hey, curbside's been out there for three weeks and, you know, can't get it picked up.
One of the things I've say that we've done recently, you, you know this because it probably serves a lot, a lot of your area. One of the things is manpiling. And then over time, as we have changed the type of vehicle, going from free man in a truck to going what we call the one-armed bandit. You know, that has obviously made us more efficient. It's kind of a learning curve on, on the resident side as well as the driver's side. But that is one step we've taken to try to help increase efficiency and all. But we still have many areas in the city that, that type of equipment can't serve every area in the city due to maybe overhead obstructions, the trees, you know, tight congestion with parking on the street, that kind of stuff. So it doesn't lend itself to, to be used in every part of the city. But that was one step that was taken to help to improve efficiency. But I understand what you're saying with, you know, there are issues from time to time and we are working, trying to work to improve those.
Are we looking at privatizing any part of these things?
I would say it's, it's, that's something we, we could look into, but I have not personally looked into it.
Okay.
Patrick, Mr. President, let me ask one more question. Patrick, while you're there, the premise health facility design, you know anything about this? We got a.
I think I'll defer that to Kippy. I think Kippy's probably got more information on that than I do.
Because we've been written, I think, come here, Kippy, tell us what's going on with it.
Good afternoon, council.
Good afternoon.
Yes, the current premise health facilities, plural, are in pretty bad shape. I don't know if you've been to those facilities lately. But it's not representative of what I would think you guys would be proud of. Excuse me. And now we're embarking on designing a new facility that will replace the current facilities that we have.
Were there any in town that we could buy? A lot of doctor offices vacant and whatever?
The answer is probably yes, but there's a but to it, Councilman Jenright. And we're looking at a location that would be in the general area of where the ones are now. I'm so sorry. We're looking at an area in the Captain Bowl area, which is kind of adjacent to downtown, which makes it convenient for most of the people who are in this area who are accustomed to going to, I think it's Home Street. And so we think that the site or a site in that area would be more convenient, but we have not looked at purchasing anything at this time.
The waterworks uses our, our facilities and I assume the county uses them too.
That's right.
So would, would we own this facility or?
I'm, I'm sorry, sir.
Would we own this facility?
Well, it, it's going to be a joint financing the way it is. The county has committed to half of the expenses that will take to design and build a facility.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Mr. President.
Ms. Beard.
Mr. Tate, so what I'm understanding is that you're going to look at a site to build fresh.
That's right.
Okay. So we're not looking at any kind of brick and mortar there right now with all these doctor's offices that are, that don't have, that they've moved out. We could not entertain looking at one of those to see if it would suffice?
Oh, I'm not saying that we have, we couldn't look at it.
Yes, sir.
What we did was quite honestly, we had some early conversations with premise health.
Right.
To kind of shape the direction that we were going.
Right.
And what that meant was that they have a set of program requirements, set of.
Right.
Functional requirements that we felt would be best if we built something new to work with those requirements and have some futuristic cans like others in that facility. And we wouldn't be bound by the existing constraints of the existing building.
But these are, these are doctor's offices that doctors have moved out of. That's what I'm just looking at and that could be ready, available. I'm just throwing that out there. I totally agree that they need some updating, believe me. I totally agree on that.
Well, to, to, to answer the question, we can look at some and make some comparative analysis to see what that would mean before we commit to anything.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
That's no problem.
Mr. Tate, I got a building, I'll talk to you in a minute.
Yeah, if you've got some, particularly to keep us from running around town, if you've got some builders that we need to look at, tell us and we'll evacuate those.
Thank you.
All right. Any other question on number nine?
All right, thank you.
Item 10, ordinance authorizing third amendment to the funding agreement with Montgomery County Community Cooperative District regarding Whitewater Park.
All right. I know we have a lot of questions on Whitewater Park, but let me just explain what this amendment is all about. When we passed it in two, I think the agreement was signed in 2019 by the mayor. The county was asking for 200, you got $250,000 per year from the city to help. So what happened in the meantime, in the last three years, the county did not build the city of Montgomery or invoice the city of Montgomery the $250,000 a year. So we gave $250,000 this year to the county to assist with Whitewater. And they're in the need of the other $500,000. So the ordinance that we passed said we'd only do $250,000 per year. And now they're asking for the additional that they didn't bill for, which is a be $250,000 or $500,000. And that's what this amendment is all about.
Mr. President, I got a, I got a statement. We sat back there when we gave the $10 million. I asked the question because I read through all the issues that, does this exclude the 1.1 million, 250,000? And somebody said, what are you talking about? And they said, yeah, that does away with that. I think everybody, you know, you probably weren't there. But said we do away with it and everybody was happy with that. So now we've given them $10 million and they still want the other. So that's my rub. And, and because this stuff, the county, that y'all bailed on our community centers. So we, we couldn't finish them, some of them. So we're kind of put in a bad spot, guys.
Yeah. And Mr. President, I do agree with Councilman Grimes at this time. We, we've had, those, those community centers were top priority for opera dollars when we did it. We all knew we needed it. They bailed on it and we did not know that they were bailing on it until the last hour. And so we used those $500,000 on our community centers. And I'm sure we still need to use in all this increasing cost for construction. Their budget is larger and wider than ours. And we are right now paying for a lot of costs at the city expense. And this is just not one of those things that are top priority for our constituents.
Okay. I, I put it on the table to talk about what we need for, why we're doing it, what was the hiccup about we're not being built. I can understand about the community centers, we can understand, we can go back and forth about what we bailed. But if we want to continue to build partnership with the county as our partner, anything else that we're trying to do in the city, we got to stop going back and forth. If we was going to talk about community centers, we should have brought that up at another time, not with Whitewater. It's, it's at the, you know, at the council to vote it up or down on what we want to do. All I'm trying to do is to make the amendment on the agreement that we had that we can back pay the $250,000 for the past two years. Am I right? Like, that's what we're asking for, Mr. Anderson?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Well, Mr. 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 President, we got some financials today and not your fault. We didn't get them to three o'clock. So I don't think anybody on this board has looked at them seriously. We got some financials. Not only we need financials, we need a plan going forward. So we don't, we quit bleeding money or at least we know how much money we're gonna bleed. And so I, I saw last year was about 2.8 million or roughly there of a loss. So if that's going to be the number every year that we know what we're dealing with, you know, I, I've had the good fortune or the bad fortune to talk to a guy that's been involved with North Carolina at the Olympic trials last year. They've been in business 20 years. They might have hit the black last year, maybe, when they started charging parking. They had 19 years in the hole. So we got to understand that i- if we're going to do this, this is going to be a line item every year. That this is, so if, if we're willing to do that, then that's what we need to realize. But don't just throw money at it because it ain't, it ain't, it's probably not coming out of the hole. It's probably not. And, and so that's what we have to agree as a council, are we willing to put it on, on the budget?
Mr. Grimes, I agree with you 100%. And I think we need financials going forward. And I think that's something we have discussed, Mr. Pruitt, in our leadership meetings. So how we go forward with Whitewater. But like my, my good friend always say, either you're pregnant or you're not. The baby is born now. So what are we going to do? We going to let the baby drown or we going to try to work these type things out? I put it on the table to make those amendments, it's up to the council as we move forward. Do we want to say we had a partnership in less than two years? We bailed on Whitewater and it, it closed. Now we got a big old facility over there that we're not doing it. I agree with you 100%. We need all the financials as we go forward. But we got to take care of the baby now.
I, I, listen, I agree, but Mr. Calhoun, we also need to understand how this thing's going to be managed, like Ed said. And Charlie, how much, how much have we put in ballpark wise?
We probably somewhere close to 40 million cash, not, not bond issues. The city's got 40 million in this thing, cash.
And, and CC, if we're going.
All the property we've bought up plus the 10 million, it's $40 million.
MO.
And if we're going to, if, CC, if we're going to pony up on this thing, and I don't know who created it, but who created the Whitewater board, the, the, that board that governs?
The county?
Yes, we did.
The county did.
Well, with $40 million, I would think if the council's going to start putting some money into this thing pretty much every year, we, I think county needs, the city needs a couple seats at that.
At the table.
I don't care who it is.
You currently have one.
We do?
Yes. I've, I've been speaking with Sam Martin.
He's the city appoint?
He's the city appoint, appointed by the mayor.
Who is Sam?
Sam Martin, that was the former editor for the Montgomery Advertisers.
How did he become our important?
Mr. President, Kendall, how many appointments is on that board?
Currently, there is one from the city. There are one from the county, one from the chamber, one from the public building authority. I'm sorry, there's two from the chamber, I mean, two from the county. One from public building authority, one from the city, one from the chamber.
Five member.
Kendall, your chairman, your chairman, Michael Jenkins.
Oh, yes, Michael Jenkins is on there as well. He is also county.
Jesse Sanders is on it?
Yes.
Jonathan A. Rent?
Yes, he's county.
James Harold?
Public building authority.
Sharon Rose?
Chamber.
Sam Martin?
City.
We, we need somebody from this group right here.
I have.
I gotta have a long, we need a long-term plan.
Yes, sir.
As you heard already, already, we don't have a plan. And if I look at what I already looked at this afternoon, you sent me, I'm amazed. Shoot, this is really good paperwork. I mean, you've done a good job, Kendall.
Well, this, this is not mine.
Whoever did it.
Well, let, let me say this. I, I agree with everything that you all have said. We, we do a lot of things unified. Some things we cannot come to unity about. This is one of those things. Community centers was one of those things. But we're unified in the fact that we're going to build a premise facility together. There are other things that we're unified about. And I would hope that we could sit down and have a discussion about this and figure out where to go. As, as Councilman Calhoun said, the baby's here. I think we're, we're all sketchy about how we got pregnant with the baby, but the baby's here and we need to take care of this baby. And we're, we're at a point now where we have what we believe to be an executive director of Montgomery Whitewater, who is good at what he does. His name is Jason Wilson. He is a former Biscuits employee who grew up with the Biscuits organization, who understands what a place like that looks like, how it should function. His resume speaks to the fact that he has worked all across the nation doing food and beverage, which is essentially to his core what Montgomery Whitewater is. We all know that with Montgomery Whitewater, it's just like the biscuits, just like anything. It takes a, a butts-in seat, sitting down to dine and drink approach to get people in there and get people doing. That's, we're, we're a community that thrives on heads and beds and butts and seats. So I understand that what maybe, what you all may be facing, the feelings that you may have, I welcome you all to come to the next Whitewater board meeting. When we set that date, I'll be more than happy to get that information out to you all. And let's sit down and let's have a great conversation about not just Montgomery Whitewater, but about all the things that we have that are coming forth in the future and the things that we need to take care of together.
When this council reads these, this stuff this afternoon after this meeting, when you start reading this, you're going to be shocked. There's 40 employees out there.
Kendall, I, I appreciate the invitation. I really do. I think that would help all of us before we can do anything. I think we need to go and experience it.
Any other questions I can ask?
Any other questions? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you.
Item 11, ordinance amending section six, six dash four A, business licenses to rent or lease property for sale of alcoholic beverages to unlicensed persons.
Okay. Go ahead, go ahead.
Section six four A on the code of ordinances, the definition of conference centers. And this states that this is business licenses to rent or lease property for sale of alcoholic beverages to unlicensed persons. Can we get a little clarification on that, please?
We can't, I mean, I can't hear you.
We didn't hear you, bud.
We didn't hear you.
We need some clarification.
I'm clarifying on what, we didn't hear you.
All right. The thing here says that this is business licenses to rent or lease property for sale of alcoholic beverages to unlicensed persons. Section six four A of the code of ordinances is the definition of conference centers.
It's changing the hours of operation of conference centers.
Yeah. So, Mr. President, just so you know, after the meeting that we had last time, had a conversation with Ms. Bliger about our conference centers and some of the issues that we've been having. The main thing that it, or the only thing that has changed in this, and I know these are normally sometimes highlighted in our packets, but if you look under A in subsection one, it lays out that all events held in conference center shall end no later than 10:30 PM with all patrons departing the building no later than 11:00 PM. We had discussed in a, I sat in on the interdepartmental business meeting that they had two weeks ago. One of the discussion points that came out of that was that it really isn't prudent to try and dissolve a license type mid-year. I don't believe that any new ones are going to be issued and steering people back towards the event hall. But then we did want to make sure that we had some restrictions on conference centers so that the Montgomery Police Department would have more ability to help us regulate the activities that are happening at these establishments. Especially because these places are not places that have liquor licenses.
We also discussed in that meeting about possibly just abolishing the conference center definition altogether.
I like that one a lot better.
So, yeah, just, Mr. President.
Mr. President, and I guess I, I'm confused because when I tried to create a, a, hours of operation, council went crazy. But we were doing the exact same thing, just wording it different. So if I'm a hotel and I got a conference center inside my hotel. So you telling me that I'm going to kick my folks out at my hotel that's there for a conference. We went through the same thing. I, I actually tried to do this and we, we killed it. But now we're doing the same thing, just reword it. Please, Mr. President, make me understand.
I will.
And Mr. Semensky, make me understand because you was the biggest component against shutting down people at a certain hour.
Yes. And the reason that we were doing that, especially as I pointed out during that time. Yes, and the reason that we were doing that, especially, as I pointed out during that time, is that we were getting a, a lot of liquor license holders. People that have ABC liquor licenses with liability insurance, and one of the things that we wanted to do is trying to address some of the activities that are happening at conference centers, which is a totally different business category, and as Mr. Calhoun knows, we have been trying to figure out, because this is a newly created license type that was just created as of last year, it was our understanding, even though we have not seen a list of these businesses, that right now, the only people that have been, uh, taking out conference center licenses have been doing so since September of last year. And so, this hasn't had an effect on, uh, the, the hotel industry or the conference industry. And that was one of the things that Mr. Calhoun and I have talked about. We've been trying to obtain since February of this year. And so, what we are seeing right now in this is the abuse of a license type, where we are turning conference centers into clubs. And in the meetings that we've had with, uh, the, with legal and with MPD, there is very little that we've been able to do in getting them to stop doing what they were doing. And so, this is a way for us to do that. Now, I was down, I was totally fine with abolishing the license type. But I thought at the last meeting that we had with the interdepartmental, unless something has changed, it was explained that doing that mid-year was then gonna create, uh, some headaches and some hiccups for licensing and revenue. If that's something that's on the table as part of this, this is a quick fix, because we know we have conference centers that are advertising to have events in my district and in other districts, and we needed to give MPD and others the opportunity to act on them right now. This is not anywhere close to the type of license type that we were dealing with. We were talking about the operating hours of, uh, business owners with liquor licenses.
Bob, I have one question, and I'm, I'm with the latter to abolish the conference center altogether.
Yes.
Because that's the confusion that we did when we created it. You know, that's a loop around from nightclub, that's a loop around from event center, so we got the same thing. We're trying to, you know, shift, take what's what. So, let me ask, are we collecting any taxes from these conference centers? The answer is no.
Are we collecting any taxes outside of a business license?
No.
No, no, we're, so, so we're not-
Because what you're doing is you're saying you're renting this out to someone.
Right. And so, we're, no, we're not collecting it, so it's a loophole that people operate these type venues within the city of Montgomery. We can't collect, we don't know, you let, you, you rental fee, you, you're renting out, you're, you're doing alcohol inside, you're doing everything, but we can't collect, we don't collect a dime on this. It just creates fraud, and I think MPD is on our work session communication on item 4 to talk about some of these things that we're dealing with within this city.
That's correct, and then the, the resources that are expended to have MPD go out to, to respond to complaints. And I'm sure all of y'all in the council are probably getting numerous phone calls from your constituents about-
We are.
-things going on.
And it's something that we created, and I think it's something that they, we need to recall and revoke, and that's our end goal. So, we don't have the confusion between a conference center, a event center, or nightclub, what be going on.
Mr. President.
Mr. Grimes?
One question. I, I, I agree with you fully, but we just wanna make sure we don't damage the hotel, the legitimate conference centers. Just not step on their toes.
I think they're legit anyway.
We developed other definitions on that, and that can be-
Mr., Mr. President.
Mr. Grimes?
Me and Mr. Julie Beer.
It's beer. Mr. Grimes, it's beer. Thank you for that. Um, just like on number 16, I know it's skipping down, but the word is multi-purpose center, conference center. I mean, that right there sums it all up. We take the conference center and make it multi-purpose, so I don't know how that term got in there as well, so.
Can we get to number 12 or is it 60?
Well, no, what I'm saying is, there's another, no, there's another word in here that's being inserted, and there's no, there's no definition for this, so therefore, that's a segue for it.
We just shouldn't vote on it. I think we need to recall that altogether. So, we're working that rhythm within the, you know, we get through this work session, how we need to go about just revoking the ordinance on the conference center altogether, 'cause it's too much confusion.
Mr. President.
Mr., uh, Mr. Maskey?
The, the reason that we had, that I had worked with, well, I'd, I'd like to hear the opinion of legal on this, 'cause I reached out about, trust me, I want these things shut down as much as anybody. We had somebody come to the council last time and tell us they were operating a conference center, and then somebody got shot in the face in their parking lot on the fall of, the next Saturday night. So, but, uh, Ms. Bellinger, can you please comment on, and remind me why we had talked about doing something that was more geared toward their hours of operation versus revoking the business license? I, I know that there was something that we had-
I think one of the concerns that was discussed during the interdepartmental meeting is that if you simply remove the definition of conference center from this code, we have businesses that currently have a conference center business license, and there was no determination about what we were going to do with those businesses. Um, I know business licenses hasn't been able to get us a list to see how many conference centers we currently have and how many people that would impact. But we need to make a decision about whether we're going to let them continue that business license through the end of the year, or we're going to try to set a time limit in which we're gonna revoke the business license after we've already given it to them, which is a concern of mine.
Mr. President, and I'm gonna leave it alone, um, Bob, since we closing at 10:30, 11 o'clock, um, who's going out there to make sure they close at that time, Bob?
At this point, you're gonna have to have law enforcement. Our, our, uh, examiners are not, uh, out there at that time of night. As it stands now, we are working on trying to get Apost examiners, but we gotta get all that taken care of.
All right.
Thank you, Bob.
We'll listen at number 4 on the work session, Bob. So, all right, next item, Madam President.
Item 12, resolution supporting the reconnecting communities grant award from the US Department of Transportation, $36,663,000 for West Montgomery.
You guys, oh, let someone from the-
We need someone, yeah.
What is that name? Wait, wait, it's the, when I get, it's the $36 million grant that we received for connecting West Montgomery from the, the US Department of Transportation that we received. And, you know, with the new administration, they're pulling some of those things back, so they're asking for a resolution saying that the council support getting that money. I don't think the grant has been drawn down yet. Come on up and talk to me, Mr. President. Y'all gotta stop hiding when we need these questions answered.
Uh, it has not been rescinded. They told us in writing that it was on hold.
Okay.
Because basically, they're looking at all of them due to the DEI, you know, concerns.
Okay, so the resolution is saying that we still support the $36 million. Don't hold it up. Please get it so we can help. Take care of the babies.
Uh, yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions from this, uh, B. Bill?
I got a question.
Yes.
Um, can I see yours? I think somebody has my paper. Okay. I just wanna get a great understanding, because this deals with West Montgomery and the connection of our district. So, the money has not been there, correct? It's not there, but they just said that we need to send them a resolution saying that we support, that we will receive it when they release it off of hold? Or are they going to continue to hold it?
They are not telling us anything other than it's on hold. And I know probably a month, maybe five weeks ago, um, a letter was sent up, uh, asking that they reconsider and go ahead and allow, uh, the city of Montgomery to, uh, start using that funding. And of course, you know, it's a grant, it's a drawdown. We expense before we can draw funds down. Uh, and that was the last official word that came to the grants department, was that it is on hold and being renewed.
So, we can, or we might get it, we might not get it, we just don't know. We just in a up and up right now.
We just don't know at this point.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right, any other questions? Thank you, next item.
13, resolution setting the chink call steering as to why the business license should not be revoked for precise conference center at 546 East Patton Avenue.
All right, Maskey.
I think this one's pretty straightforward.
Straightforward, okay. Next item.
Item 14, this individual had to be, he called me this, this afternoon. He's having to go out of town for a graduation exercise, and he asked if we could carry it over to the next meeting.
Okay.
15, application for a mobile transport venue with alcoholic beverages, doing business as Thompson's Drinking E- Dream, with no physical location.
All right, no physical location. I think, go ahead, Bob. Me and you had that discussion.
For 15, um, where our ordinance states now, it says that like on mobile things, they can only do non-alcoholic beverages. Council is gonna have to adopt a motion to permit that and enact an ordinance.
I got that on the substitute. We have that.
Right.
And I'll, I'll explain, the council, we, we have food trucks that bounce around the city. We did the 60th anniversary. That we're using them from the city, but we have to adjust this, uh, make the amendment on this, uh, ordinance in order to allow them to move out outside of the entertainment district. So, that, that's what that's all about.
It's-
Item 15.
Mr. President, I guess the question I would have about this is, are we, is this really about entertainment districts? Or is this about allowing somebody to have a concession vehicle operation? Or is this just a different version of a catering business that wants to also have a liquor license? And the reason I think that matters is for a couple of ones, a couple of things. One is that, you know, we don't have a lot of catering or mobile bartending outfits in the state. B&amp;B would be one of the bigger, the biggest ones, and they're out of Auburn, that do a lot of the, the weddings and events that we have here. My only concern is, is that we then create essentially pop-up parties anywhere that's willing to host these individuals. And you're shaking your head, so I guess I may be missing the point on this, but I just wanna make sure and understand better what this actually is for.
This is, well, I haven't seen their application, but the only amendment we're making is to the food truck ordinance, which would authorize, um, anyone who has a food truck to get an ABC license. And in accordance with state law, that ABC license, state code, only allows them to operate in entertainment districts and only in designated parking spaces as we designate, which have to be at least 150 feet away from any, um, freestanding business. Um, I'm actually in the process of trying to get the information from GIS to show how many food truck parking spaces we have in entertainment district. I think we may only have a couple in the downtown district. I don't think we have any others.
I think we only have-
And they, they can't sell alcohol. If there are food truck anywhere besides downtown, in, in entertainment district, they can't sell alcohol.
Okay. I think this is, I mean, it's obviously something that I think we should be looking at. I know that other cities have kind of figured this out. It also may be a fix to one of the problems that we have, where we don't actually have a licensing type or a way to have, uh, catering bartenders in general in this city. I'm pretty sure, I know plenty of places that can operate where people stand up and, you know, offer up their services, but I think you're gonna, I think there's gonna be, I mean, are we trying to do this amendment separately from approving this business license, or are you, like, they, they seem unrelated to item 15?
This is for a mobile truck-
It's a mobile truck.
-that is selling alcoholic beverages. The state has a rule on this law, section 28 dash 3A dash 17.2. I'm citing part B, section B, part 2, that the applicant has to, once they, uh, intend to operate, selling out the applicant's presented his or her application to the governing body of the municipality.
But, but, yeah.
Mr. President.
Apology, I just wanna ask one more question. So, one of the things in obtaining an ABC license is you have to have a physical location to store your alcohol, right? Well, that's, well, that's what I'm asking.
Like the food truck?
Y- yeah, but it, it's even more regulated than that, because you have to have, it has to be inspected, it has, it has to remain in the same location where alcohol is, is stored. And so, provide, that's why I'm asking about this versus this, is that is this business, I mean, are we even sure that the ABC is gonna issue them an ABC license? Or you're saying that the ABC won't issue them unless we do this?
The ABC has already issued them, is from my understanding. The city of Montgomery has issued them a license, but we don't, we, we have used them down on the riverfront and, and everything, because we didn't- Yes.
I think they've made application to the ABC board, but, but they require certification from the municipality.
Mr. Semenski, she does have the ABC license.
They, they have ABC license already. It's just in the city of Montgomery, with this ordinance, we have to make the amendment. They can't move around. It's a straight, we have used them on the riverfront, we've used them at the 60s all over the city, but there's, we're not authorized. So, we're just trying to make the amendment to make it leave, because the ABC board has already given them a license to operate within the city of Montgomery.
Does that mean that we've given them?
I have a question. As a clerk receiving those applications from ABC, are they gonna have to make a secondary application to the city of Montgomery, like all the other liquor licenses?
Because I don't, unless, has this come before the council that we voted upon, an ABC license for this business?
Yeah, and then before, we voted on it, I think about a year ago.
It, it was when I broke up the pedal booth.
With no physical location?
Yes, it was a pedal booth. I pushed it. Pedal bus? Yes. You were, you weren't. It was two years ago.
We can carry it over that, what we want to make, vote on the amendment. We carried it over. No, I mean, I ain't voting carrying it over, 'cause I think we discussed it and we voted on it. Yeah, 'cause I just had to bring it up. Okay, all right, next item.
Item 16, application for a multi-purpose center slash conference center, doing business as the Gallery, 6001 Montcella Drive.
All right, um, next, Bob? Yes, yes, sir.
Mr. President.
We received word that the applicant, or number 16, uh, is out of town. Wanted to carry it over.
Okay.
Item 17, are we-
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Miss, yes.
But we, I have the concern here about that multi-purpose. It's directly across from Fresh Lane Church. With Kim and Kyle Cersei, there's two, there's a church in the script mall, there's one behind it, and Bama Blaine Cheerleading is right behind it, too. I grow up, I've emphasized on it, so I have some concerns.
Okay, it's been carried over, so we got two of these abortion concerns. All right.
Item 17, application for a lounge retail class 1 liquor license, doing business as Sugar Rose, 3439 McGee Road.
All right, I'll have an issue with it. We'll have a public hearing at that time.
18, application for retail beer, retail table wine, all premises only, doing business as Lines Pride, 1061 Eastern Boulevard.
All right, Mr. Grimes?
I'm fine.
All right.
19, appeal to proposed demolition of a unsafe structure, 2138 East Fifth Street, Oak Park, by Paul Felder.
All right, we're here for Mr. Paul Felder in regular meeting.
Item 20 has been withdrawn. Item 21, resolution designating nuisance abandonment agents.
All right, I'll let it self-explain to him.
22, resolution says in the cost of demolition of their locations.
All right.
23, is pursuant to section 1153, one, cut out of the authorization of demolition of the listed locations.
All right.
24, our year resolution declaring of authorizing assisting cost of, of abandonment of public nuisances on various lots. And 25, is Mrs. Mary Cleveland Jackson to address the council regarding drainage problems in Macedonia.
Item withdrawn. All right, hey, council, we have another issue, uh, that came before me this week that I wanna bring up, and it's from, from license division. I think we, um, we did not ensure a license to, come on up, Bob, uh, someone.
C store?
Yeah, C store, and, and the, uh, the transfer has been table indefinitely.
Okay.
Uh, so, my thing is that the person or the owner of the business does not have the opportunity to renew the license, because the council tabled the transfer indefinitely. I don't think that's fair to the owners of your C store if you can't renew your license because of something that we did and having brought it back up. So, you know, we're putting somebody out of business, but I looked at the, the, the information, that's doing almost a million dollars a year in business.
Are we talking a new one, or are we talking a renewed?
It's an old one.
Okay. And how, and how are they licensed?
Their license, that's a convenience store, gas station.
Okay.
So, we, we took a season, this is order, but the ta, it's been tabled. It, it won't bring up by the council, so why would we run somebody out of business on a transfer?
Which one are we talking about?
Both bring it back up. Yeah, we need to bring it back up.
We need to bring it back up, and that business was shut down.
Say that, say again?
I said, uh, our examiners went out there last week and closed the business.
So, the business is closed?
Which business are we talking about?
Is this the 171 Eastern Boulevard that we were talking about? Stacy Calhoun, Range.
No, 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 not that one. This is an existing business. Uh-
That's what I'm thinking about now.
It's on Ed, Mike.
That's it. In fact, I contacted Chief Hall, too, on that, to, to write by, to ensure they were closed.
Well, I guess we'll have to talk to Ms. Rodder. We need, I'm, my concern, I don't know what the concern is with that. I try to stay outside people's district, but when it- but when it comes to a point of a person doing business and we want a lot of transfer, to shut a business down that's doing over a million dollars of business.
They don't have a business license.
I know, they can't get a business license because their business license has been table indefinitely. That's, that's, that's something that we gotta take a... They, no, they just take a cease and desist.
It's under a different LLC. They don't have a clear why.
They have this stuff in a different LLC.
They do have a license.
So he just told me they don't have a license.
So Ross, let me ask this, why did we table this indefinitely?
Because the council numbered tabled it indefinitely, but I don't know what the reasoning, and I don't want to get, set that precedent that we can do that and then we run people out of business. So I think that's something we need to revisit as a council, and I'm talking to Ms. Ross about that one-on-one. I don't know the issue.
Right.
But we can't do that within the city of Montgomery. We're talking about growing this city, and we do that within districts.
I understand that, but in the same kind...
No, you're doing your job. You did what you're supposed to do.
You did your job.
You did what you're supposed to do. All right. Okay, we'll move on then. All right, in our public communication, thank you, Bob. Uh, work session roster, Mr. Wesley Cox.
Mr. President, we have, all right, you've already discussed that one in the mayoral beach. I'm just looking at the ones up here.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Good afternoon, council. My name is Wesley Cox. I'm the director of traffic engineering for the city. And I'm here to talk a little bit about our neighborhood traffic calming program. Ms. Johnson, District Three was the one that kind of brought this up and wanted us to go over how it works when we have complaints about speeding, safety issues in our neighborhoods, how the city's program addresses that. So I'm here with a couple of folks that are very intelligent on this topic, some great engineers, that I wanted to kind of help explain, kind of a background on how this works and how we develop what we do here in the city of Montgomery. So I'm gonna let them introduce themselves, talk a little bit about their knowledge of this topic, then we'll get into the specifics for the city of Montgomery.
Hey, guys. Nick Freeman with Jacobs here in Montgomery. I've got Dwayne Tetter, who's our Southeast Regional Transportation Lead. We'll talk about traffic calming measures in general, and then we'll turn it back to Wesley.
Very good. Thank you for having us. And again, Dwayne Tetter with Jacobs. I just wanted to give the council a bit of an overview of the work that, uh, that happens in traffic calming in the Southeast US. Uh, if you will, it looks like you're gonna have the slides up, up behind you. But again, I manage our practice in the Southeast US, so we were asked to give an overview of what some similar cities we're doing for traffic calming, what are some of the important steps and aspects of traffic calming. So I'm gonna go through those like you see in the agenda, the references, examples, what that typical process looks like for a lot of best practices for cities in the Southeast US, when they go through prioritization, evaluation, design, how they do funding, and then summarize it all. Next slide. So what is traffic calming? A lot of folks will refer to it as speed reduction measures to try to get vehicles to slow down. It is, uh, traffic calming is done to support non-motor safety, also mobility and comfort. So to make people feel more calm as they're driving, walking, biking alongside vehicles. So that's, that's kind of how we refer to traffic calming. Next slide. Uh, my staff and I picked out a few example cities that were similar in population to the city of Montgomery. You see Charleston up there, Chattanooga, Port St. Lucie, Savannah, just to name a few, that have similar population sizes. And then we also took a look at Augusta, a statewide program in Virginia, and then Gwinnett County, Georgia was also in, in our look. Gwinnett County admittedly a good bit larger in population. Next slide. So again, what, what are some best practices for traffic calming? Um, I would say that again, programs typically begin with complaints. Citizens, just like the ones behind me, will request and notice things that they're, uh, have an issue with the speeds on typically local roads. Uh, again, you, you see speeding mentioned, crashes, cut-through traffic is one of the most common things that we run into with, uh, traffic calming being a solution for. Those processes are usually looked at with speeds and traffic volumes, and in some cities, they enact petitions. They take up a petition in the neighborhood. Next slide. Uh, again, just an overview of these example cities. A lot of times initiated by a citizen, council member, city staff, et cetera. There are typically concerns about safety, speed, pedestrians, traffic rerouting due to developments, or, you know, just folks running into heavy traffic. Um, and then there's some of the petition thresholds that are out there. Next slide. Um, so what we usually see, uh, once those complaints come in, in a, in a best practices standpoint, is there's an evaluation process. The city will go in and look at what the speeds are, what the volumes of traffic, count the pedestrians. Uh, they will look at the site in person. They'll review the crash history or the accident history, that field assessment. They'll, again, they'll go out and put eyes on it, and they'll use a methodology that I'm not gonna try to explain all those flow charts below, but that's something that the Federal Highway Administration, which is a branch of the US DOT, like we heard from earlier, that is providing that grant hopefully for the city, um, that they will conduct. Next slide. So typically after an evaluation period, they're gonna do a prioritization. So those are typically ranked by the severity of the speeds, community support, either support for or lack thereof. Is it feasible to do traffic calming? Um, let me pause a second. Traffic calming, we typically think of things like speed humps, speed tables, chicanes, things that cause vehicles to slow down like signs. Um, some agencies use a point system. Um, others look at equity and proximity to schools when they're considering their scoring. Next slide. So after, uh, some prioritization, then the city will typically go through a design and implementation process. There'll be education put out, signage will typically accompany it, and the infrastructure, that's the actual asphalt, that's the concrete, that's the changes to the roadway that basically requires folks to slow down in those areas where they're driving too fast. Um, I've got some examples of some of the characteristics you see, some of the local cities. I won't read all those, but the slides will be presi, uh, prevented, or provided to you guys. Next slide. Funding strategies, um, I thought this one was important. Uh, a lot of cities do it in different ways, but I would say that what we see as best practice out there is the city will typically have, um, a funding identified, kind of an annual line item. You see the example, um, this is easily found online, but Gwinnett County, Georgia provides a, a speed hump fund, if you will, and they set aside some money each year. It may or may not all get used, but again, that funding is prioritized based on criteria I mentioned earlier. Some cities will, uh, will do cost-sharing models where citizens in neighborhoods might share costs or be asked to share costs, kind of like a, a bit of a neighborhood HOA-type tax, if you will. Some will find grants from federal funding, some a really big project. Next slide. In summary, again, I was asked to, to give the council a bit of a briefing on what's the best practices that are out there on traffic calming programs and, and what we see similar cities to Montgomery doing. They're data-driven, they're community-focused and involved, they evaluate thresholds, they prioritize. Funding has to be found, and the successful ones are engaging residents throughout. And with that, I think that was the last slide, if you will. So that was just some legal jargon from Jacobs. Sorry about that. But, uh, but I'll turn it back over to Wesley.
Thank you, Dwayne. So I wanted to kind of cover our steps in the city real quick. Um, I'm just gonna step through them, and this is kind of general. If, if you've got some specific questions, we can get into it, but for the sake of time, we'll just kind of hit what, what my six steps are here that we go through. So first one is submitting a request. Next slide. Um, so, so we require that the requests are made by the neighborhood. Um, you know, Ms. Johnson kind of initiated this, but I know everybody deals with the same thing. I, I do. Where we're getting calls, it's, you know, a specific location in a neighborhood, or I get, you know, maybe this person, but five others in the same neighborhood. So what we try to do is kind of filter that down to a request for, for a neighborhood because the, the solutions have to be a neighborhood-based. It has to be an area-wide solution and not specific location. So we have a form that we use that we can get out to neighborhoods. Some places have established homeowners associations. They have an established representative that can do that. Others may not, and that's okay. We just kind of ask that somebody's name is that representative to, to kind of be the, the champion for that. Um, and then, once we've got those requests, we start reviewing the eligibility criteria. As Dwayne mentioned, you know, we're looking at street classification. Is it a local road? Is it a collector, a larger arterial road? That kind of determines what we can do, uh, as far as design goes. So, um, several things to kind of look at. Is this request something that, that we really need to move forward with? Next slide. Next, we, we go to collect supporting data. Um, we've got to see, we've got to get a full picture of what's going on. So one, we've got to determine what's the affected, affected area. And so, you know, the complaint may come from a specific address, but we've got to look at that entire street. Then we've got to look at what are alternate routes. If we do something to this one street, is it gonna cause a problem at another street? So we've got to figure out what that entire area is. We've got to go collect the traffic, speed, and volume data um, so we can see what those numbers really are. And then looking at the crash data as well. We've, we've pulled crash data from that area and, and if, obviously, if we're seeing crashes that involve pedestrians, involve high speeds, that's gonna factor into what gets done at that location. Next slide. So then we got to determine if it warrants any action, any traffic calming infrastructure. Um, we take that data, get it into charts and graphs that, that can really tell the story of what's going on. Um, at that point, if you really get data that is, is broken down by times of day, specific locations, that's something that we can share with public safety, with the police department. You know, we're, we're in communication with their traffic division and work with them to maybe help do specific enforcement if that data is showing a specific time.
Hey, Ms. Cox.
Yeah.
I know time is being well-spent. If you would share that with us, and if any council member have any question, we can share that information, that slideshow, without constituents' help on how we do that. So if you can take any question from any council member, I want to move on because we got Olympia, generally some other people.
Yep, yep. We'll get it out to everybody. I, I know I've worked with a lot of you, but yeah, shoot the questions to me for sure.
Mr. President, uh, this was an important presentation because it's, it's not just the constituents that we can reach, but it's those that we can't reach that need to be educated on this piece. So if we can start doing some maybe town halls and putting this out and doing some public, maybe PSAs, because what we're getting, Mr. President and council and, and general public is, we'll get a call and they're asking for speed bumps in front of their home where one person on the street may feel that it's speeding happening, and it may very well be. But the process hasn't been explained thoroughly across the council, nor to the general public, where there's a three-one-one request put in that triggers, uh, push to traffic and engineering, which triggered, which triggers this process to happen. But the people don't know it, and it's not the same message going out, what it really looks like. It's three-one-one gets a call, and then they say, "Call your council member." When that is not what we do. We don't just put in speed bumps because we get one call. And so there has to be education behind it. So this is something really important that we can put out, and this is recorded. People can go back and watch it and things of that nature. And then, of course, we can still get these slides and we can push it out. But my neighborhood association, some of them only five people, they're not reaching an entire neighborhood. It's a entire demographic of people in the city of Montgomery that don't watch the meetings, that don't come to meetings, they don't have a clue who we are. And then they have an issue that happens on their street, and now they look for us. But now they can refer back to this council meeting because it's transparency, it's publicly posted, the news is talking about it, and we're doing education pieces. So we're circling this all the way around, and now we're checking the blocks. So now the general public knows what to do and how to properly do it, rather than us getting a thousand calls for the same issue. And then now we have departments that are also being educated at the same time. So the same information is distributed at the same time, and we don't have any confusion across the board. And that was the point of this, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you. Share that information with us. Thank you. All right, Mr. John Dowell's not in town, so that item has been withdrawn. He's gonna be moved to the next council meeting. Ms. Sophia Johnson, Director of Student Support for MBS. All right, we'll move her in two weeks. Um, MPD Business License Complaint, Chief Graybulls, or Deputy Chief John Hall.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
During, during our last Departmental Business Meeting, we had run across some instances dealing with businesses. So we were asked to go forward with some of those problems. Need is a police department coming up with solutions for that and how we're going to address that. Um, the first one is when we're getting incomplete business reviews. They're asking us, "Hey, go check out this business." We don't know why. We just know that something's going on. They're saying there may be some illegal activity going on there. There might be some of this going on there. Well, some of those instances, I've got to send officers out. What am I sending them to look for? What are we trying to review? Also, we need to know what's the specific address. On one of the ones this week, we had just a name. We figured it out, but it was the wrong name, and there was no address to confirm that. Another one, the name came back to eleven different locations in Montgomery. So we were unable to pull what, what we were looking for, for that Departmental Business Meeting. So we're getting the information, we need the complete information. Where's the business located? If you don't know the name, the address, we can definitely find it. And that's what allows us to pull up our calls for service and if someone's gonna go there and how, what they're gonna be looking for. Um, some of the things they refer to, well, there's heavy traffic. Well, heavy traffic is not necessarily a police instance. There's nothing illegal going on. It's just heavy traffic. Is there something illegal that we need to look at? So we need to know what we're looking at and why we're going into, and so we can tell the officers what to look at. Five o'clock some areas, it's just gonna be heavy traffic. There's nothing going on. There's nobody being held up. It's just that time of day. So we need to know the times and what's going on, what we're looking for, because we're sending officers out to these locations to, to review that. Um, so we, that helps, and it also keeps the officer safe, and that helps keep the, um, businesses safe. So we're all on the same page, knowing why we're going there. So we need that information when we're going out there to do it. And also, we need the city council and people call you to refer them back to nine-one-one or the non-emergency number. Because when we're starting to collect data, and we do resource details all the time, in other words, we get complaints, we have speeders at this location, we have burglars at this location, we have B and Es at this location, we pull that data out of our system to send our officers and put these details together for, during those things. But if it's not called into nine-one-one, it's not put into the system. In other words, if they call the city council, the city council calls us directly. We're gonna go take care of the problem, but we go pull that data out of our system, that location may have zero calls in our system because they were all taken care of via the phone, through the city council, then directly to the police department, instead of going through the communications center, which promptly logs all of those calls. And other, and so we may have someone that has, shows zero calls. There was really twenty. We have another area that had ten calls, and that's the area we send our resources because that's the area in which we showed a problem. So it's gonna be really important that you get your constituents to either call the nine-one-one or the non-emergency number, depending on what's emergency or not. And I, and that non-emergency number, six-two-five-twenty-six-fifty-one, um, is the number they'll need to call, um, for that. And now, right now, we're still trying to work with the business license when it comes to closing businesses. We had some stuff, we're working with them now, but we're being advised that when it comes to closing a business, there's a process. That process has to go through the council and through Department of Revenue. Um, and it's not good, it does not go through the police department. What we are trying to help them with is we're trying to go and help, like, document, do body cam footage and other footage if a business is doing something. Um, so like they're supposed to be closed, but according to what we have, there's a process that we don't close them. That's done through this, this council and the business revenue. We just help provide some of the evidence to do that. So we just want to make sure that was brought up, because that came up to us last week when we were trying to go out and do some of these businesses that didn't have a license. So we want to make sure that we follow the ordinances that are put out by the city without getting ourselves in trouble or getting the city into trouble. So just, just as just a real quote of what we need, we're moving forward. We're trying to do this in Departmental Business Reviews. I said the most important thing is please have constituents call nine-one-one or the non-emergency, put it on the official record. So we're pulling that stuff. It is in the system.
All right. Any questions, chief? And what he's asking, so they can have record for calls for services? That's basically what you're... That's basically what you're asking. And this did come to me, council, uh, when we're asking for show cause hearings, the clerk has asked that you have to be more specific on why you're calling for a show cause hearing. She need detailed information on that. So, you know, if we're challenging court, we'll have that information. Thank you. Alright, thank you, Chief. Alright, um, Community Action, Mr. Pringle, interim director or the board chair.
Who is it? He said there was one to be here.
Just right, Pringle, please.
Mr. Pringle. One in the center.
In the center.
He okay, he okay, he cool, stay right there. Alright, go ahead, give me your name for your record, sir.
Sergeant Pringle.
Alright.
Can you get backstage?
Okay. Alright, Mr. Pringle, I'll call you down to talk with us on some items. You know, we know the director has been changed, and what we're trying to do from a council standpoint is to find out what's the direction you guys are planning to go, what's the next step? Are you searching for a director? What are we doing to try to rectify the situation that we have at hand?
Well, one, one of the main reasons they had a change in direction because we have a serious problem in our organization with the operation of our finance department. We had a person that was in the finance department that was consultant and, uh, they didn't spend over by 50% of their time in the office and they didn't have anybody in that office with a degree in accounting. So, uh, we wasn't able to make changes in the finance department until they made changes in the leadership. So right now, we have advertised, one of the most important things is, is getting the financing office. So we are advertising now for a CFO that would be a staff and not a consultant.
Okay.
We have a, uh, gentleman now that working with us that have a degree in accounting. And we also trying to get additional people there. So the main reason that the board changed the leadership was because of our finance. And right now, we intend to advertise for a director, but mainly we want to change the finance department. Now, we also had a consultant firm out of Illinois that had been doing audits for our organization for years prior to the prep, to the past administration that just left. And we had a meeting with them this morning and they will be working with us in order to get that straight.
Okay.
But, uh, go ahead.
No, no, I was letting you finish up.
But, uh, but the main problem is that I was in, was working with our finance. The board have instructed our leadership to, uh, improve that situation. Uh, they've been working, been working with that for over two years and the past leadership did not make any kind of move.
Okay.
But as soon as, uh, I was in a position as interim, uh, executive director for that organization, we got a letter to that individual and asked that person, she had, uh, 90 days to, uh, we had a contract with her for 90 days in advance to get her, uh... But after we gave her the 90-day notice, she decided to leave at once.
Okay.
So, uh, that's mainly, uh, what's the, one main reason for that.
Alright, so Ms. Pringle, you're telling me you guys have a way ahead, a plan going forward on how we get a, get a new director and a CFO?
Well, we definitely have a plan for that.
Okay.
Really, the, uh, changes is already approved. The morale of the employees is up and, uh, we've had people in our organization that poor morale. The past, uh, financial people have, uh, taken away all of their retirement and they've had the financial position sold that very few of our people have medical coverage because of the situation with leadership and the finance. So the finance and the, uh, leadership of our organization kind of went hand in hand. So after we have made that changes, things are looking up.
Okay.
We feel that we're headed in the right direction.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Pringle, any question?
I do, Mr. President.
Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Pringle, thank you so much for coming to update us this evening. Uh, this was well overdue, uh, we appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Pringle, you mentioned, uh, you're the interim, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and you mentioned, uh, you don't have a CFO, and you said there was a plan. I'm, I'm just really curious on who's doing the hiring? Because from my understanding, there is no human resources director. So who's doing the hiring? Who has the capacity to hire, place out a, even put out a notice, a job posting for someone to hold the position of CFO? Who's doing that for your organization right now?
Well, prior to that leadership that just left, we had one person that was in charge of our, uh, human resource office.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the person that's doing it. The person that was leading that, uh, was heading that office, was instructed to, uh, seek for a CFO.
Mm-hmm.
And that did not happen until we had the, uh, somebody else to take over.
Mm-hmm.
So right, so right now, we are advertising also the, uh, firm that used to do the auditing for the organization, they also would be advising us and helping us select a CFO.
So what I'm hearing is, right now, you're actually consulting out everything that you need until you can get someone in place?
You said?
You're consulting out what you need in order to get your people in place?
It's not necessarily consulting out, but the organization have advertised for it. And the consultant firm that have done our audit in the past would assist us in reviewing all the application and trying to help us get a CFO that's gonna be of benefit to our organization.
Okay, okay, and so that is going right now through the board?
How is that now?
That's going right now through your board of directors?
You say is it going to?
Yes, it, it's your board of directors leading this charge.
Yes, they have, they instructed the past leadership to get a CFO that's hired and employed because the CFO that was before was a consultant and spent just 50% of their time in our office.
Mm-hmm.
So the board, this, this is what board asked us to do, is to advertise and get a CFO.
Okay, thank you so much, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Pringle, appreciate you coming out.
Okay.
Alright, it is now 5:23, the regular council meeting will start at 5:30. Yes, that everyone be in a seat by 5:30 so we can start on time. Thank you.